Yes, Commissioner Irvin? Excuse, okay. Commissioner Hirschwein?
Here.
Commissioner Lewin? Paul, oops, sorry. Commissioner Lewin? Okay, he's present. Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Here.
Chair Wermuth? We have-
Present.
Five members present.
Did you call Commissioner Lewin?
Yes, I did, but he didn't have-
I didn't hear my name on the table either.
Joanne, would you call Commissioner Lewin?
Okay, Commissioner Lewin?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, there we go.
The sound is quite muted coming from the staff. At least for Joanne. Good evening, everyone.
It was on.
Can you hear me, see me?
Yes, I hear you, Jim. Is it better?
Thank you.
Okay.
We have, at this point, we're going into public comment, but should we introduce the project first before we open to public comments, Flynn?
Madam Chair, we don't have anyone signed up for public comment. The project applicant will be available to give a presentation after staff has made their presentation. So with that, we can go ahead and move on to item number one on the agenda.
Thank you. Item one on the agenda is a major architectural and variance application submitted by Rios, is it Rios Clemente, for a proposed mixed-use project which includes 25 single and two-story apartment units and commercial spaces on an undeveloped 2.4-acre site located at the northeast corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and West Chino Drive, 575 North Palm Canyon Drive. It's in the CBD and the R2 zone. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Chair, before we begin the staff report, I just want to remind the Planning Commission that this is a study session, and so no action will be taken on this item. This will be a discussion item only. In terms of a study session, just a reminder also that we shouldn't make any prejudicial comments or statements that would indicate how you might vote when this item comes before you formally. So we need to avoid statements such as "I couldn't support the project because of so-and-so," or "I think the project is terrific and I will vote to approve it." So we need to avoid statements, one way or the other, indicating how you would vote. However, fact-finding questions and comments are generally appropriate. So for example, if you have a concern about parking, the appropriate way to do that would be to ask the question, "It doesn't seem like the parking is adequate. How does it comply with city standards?" Or if you have a concern about architecture, you might say, "The massing of the project doesn't seem to match the surrounding properties. What was your intent?" So those types of fact-finding questions are more than appropriate in your study session. But again, just avoid any statements about how you might vote on the item when it comes before you formally. With that, let me talk just a little bit about why this is on your study session agenda today. We received this project about a month and a half ago, and it's a very beautiful project in terms of the renderings that have been provided, the landscaping, et cetera. However, there are two significant issues that would prevent staff from being able to recommend approval of the project, and those are relative to consistency with the general plan density requirement. And then secondly, the variances that are being requested from setback requirements. We have a couple of solutions to those, and for that reason, I wanted to present the project to you here in a study session, go through the elements of the project, and then talk about what we might have the applicant do to bring the project into conformance with the city's general plan and code requirements so that they wouldn't need variances, et cetera. And so that's the reason why we're doing the study session today. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Kikuchi, who will do a presentation on the project, give you an overview, and discuss some of the issues. And then following Ms. Kikuchi's presentation, I'll do a short discussion on the general plan and zoning issues and how we might resolve those. So with that, Noriko?
Thank you, good afternoon. Rios is a mixed-use project on a 2.4-acre site, which includes 25 apartment units and two commercial spaces, which will be occupied by a gym and a yoga studio. The proposal includes six detached buildings with a maximum building height of 28 feet and 1 inch and two stories. The floor area of the residential portion is 46,672 square feet, and the commercial space will be 2,400 square feet. And the development also includes a gatehouse, which is 610 square feet. The proposed floor area ratio is 0.57 with open space of 54.6%. The project site is located at the northwest corner of West Chino Drive and North Palm Canyon Drive. The site is adjacent to the single-family residences to the west and the commercial development to the south. It is also next to a strip of land to the north, which is owned by Riverside County Flood Control. This is a general plan land use designation on the project site, which is a central business district. And the zoning designation of the project site is a split. An east half of the project site is zoned as CBD, and the west half is zoned R2, which is limited multiple-family residential zone. And this is a rendering submitted by the applicant of the proposed project. As you can see, a proposed project is contemporary in design, and the project proposes a simplistic architectural design, which will be accentuated with a character-defining decorative screens on the building elevations. The plant materials and building elevations in the various projection will bring details and complexity to the project site. And these are additional images that are provided by the applicant. The development image of the site at night, the view corridor of the driveway, and the entrance area, and the pool, and the courtyard space. This is a site plan of the proposed design. It is designed in a linear orientation with the six detached buildings. Access will be provided on Beraldo Road, and there will be a bay parking on the same street frontage. And this is the proposed floor plan, the first level. The mixed-use component will be provided on the ground level along North Palm Canyon Drive. And on the first level, some of the residential units will have parking spaces as well. And this is the second floor. The upper level of the commercial space will be residential units. And the second level will be mostly residential.
We've lost the audio.
Madam Chair, can you hear my voice?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Ms. Kikuchi, go ahead and proceed.
These are the proposed elevations of the project. The maximum building height of 28 feet and 1 inch will be found at the corner, which is the, excuse me, at the southeast corner of the building at the intersection of West Chino Drive and North Palm Canyon, where the commercial use will be located. And as you see, the elevations will be accentuated with the screens. And these are additional elevations, north elevation and west elevations. The north will be located along the Riverside County Flood Control parcel. And the west elevation is the area where the main entrance will be located. As the director introduced, the project faces some general plan and zoning challenges as submitted. With regards to the general plan issue, the proposed project does not meet the minimum development density requirement. Based on the size of the parcel, the general plan would require the site to be developed with at least 50 units, whereas the project proposes 25 residential units. And because the project site has a split zones, for the CBD portion of the property, again, the project does not meet the minimum density requirement. And for the physical attributes of the proposed project, the second floor of the commercial building, which faces North Palm Canyon, it does not meet the setback requirement. And generally, the proposed wall height exceeds the maximum height that's permitted by the zoning code. And for the R2 zone portion of the project site, the proposed lot coverage of 35% exceeds the maximum lot coverage of 30%, which is permitted by the zoning code. And the proposed wall height, the project proposes eight feet, and again, the proposed walls are a little too high and do not meet the zoning code requirement. In addition to the wall height and setback issues, the zoning code requires all buildings to be at least separated by 15 feet in the R2 zone. In this case, there is this gatehouse that's being proposed 6.5 feet away from the adjacent building, even though these two buildings are connected by a shared wall. And as for setbacks for the R2 zone portion, the north setback and the south setback do not conform to the code requirements. The applicants requesting the variance approval for the setbacks and other development standards issues, the zoning code provides findings that are specifically required for the approval of a variance that are based on the state law. And based on the site information that's been provided, the site does not really exhibit any unique features such as size, shape, and topography. And then also, the project does not fully conform to the general plan requirement as submitted. So these are the challenges that the staff observed based on the submittal, and it continues to the presentation by the director.
Thank you, Ms. Kikuchi. Let me talk a little bit about how we might resolve the issue of density related to this project. As Ms. Kikuchi indicated, the site is designated CBD or Central Business District by the general plan, even though it's located just slightly north of what we define as our downtown area. One of the problems with this designation is that you'll notice immediately to the west, we have the ER or a state residential area. So we have a single-family residential area immediately to the west. And so this is kind of an unusual condition, which significantly limits the ability of the applicant to provide greater density, because there are restrictions in terms of height, et cetera, related to the separation from the single-family residential to the west. And so that's one of the reasons why we're having such a challenge trying to meet the density threshold for the Central Business District relative to this project. What we would propose as a way to resolve this is we would have the applicant file a general plan amendment to change the general plan designation from CBD to NCC, which is Neighborhood Community Commercial. Neighborhood Community Commercial is a less intense designation in the general plan and one that you find just kitty-corner across the street and then along North Palm Canyon. And so let me just go into the specifics of that. If we were to designate the site as Neighborhood Community Commercial, one of the benefits, as I pointed out, is it may be better suited as we are adjacent to single-family residential immediately to the west, because it allows a lesser intensity of use. Also, the NCC Neighborhood Community Commercial designation would allow for the mixture of residential and commercial uses. As Noriko pointed out, while the site is largely residential, they do have commercial uses on the ground floor facing North Palm Canyon. And so that general plan designation would still allow both of those uses as part of the project. As I had also indicated, this is consistent with the areas on North Palm Canyon. As you can see on this map, the purple areas immediately to the north. We have a long stretch there, which is Neighborhood Community Commercial. Now, there is one issue that we would need to correct as part of this process. Is currently Neighborhood Community Commercial does not reference residential uses. However, as you look at the properties further to the north, we have quite a few multifamily properties that are designated NCC, Neighborhood Community Commercial. And so since we already have residential uses in Neighborhood Community Commercial, and it would be consistent with the update that we are proposing to the housing element, what staff would do is as part of our general plan update process, we would amend the language of the Neighborhood Community Commercial description to allow housing uses and to set appropriate density limits. So that's one issue with this- So that's one issue with this general plan amendment that we're proposing for the project. What it would do, though, is resolve the density threshold issue that we don't currently meet. And so with that change, staff would be able to make a finding that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan based on a general plan amendment. There is another issue, and that is the area immediately north is still designated CBD. What I would suggest is that, once we are done updating the general plan, we will need to do some cleanup items relative to general plan designation citywide. And that's one that I would include as part of NCC, as part of a citywide effort to update general plan designation. So that would be a corrective action that would come later. So that would address the general plan issue. Let me then go to what is the appropriate zoning and how might that be used relative to the project? Currently, as was explained, the project has split zoning of R2 and CBD. With the change to the general plan, rather than retaining that zoning, what I would recommend is that the site be zoned C1, which is a retail business district. However, you may recall that a couple of years ago, we amended the C1 district to allow residential uses. And so what the C1 zoning district, just like the general plan, it would allow both the residential and the commercial uses without conflict. Another thing that the C1 zoning does is it helps to relieve a number of the variances that the applicant is requesting for the project in that the development standards for the C1 zone district have reduced setbacks. However, we still need to be mindful of the single-family residential properties to the west. And so it's recommended that we have one-story buildings on the western side of the project and increase setbacks in that area, which the applicant is already providing. As we look at how the C1 zoning would fit with the rest of the Palm Canyon corridor, as you'll note, the areas immediately to the north have a C1 designation. The properties adjacent to it to the north are Zone PD, but reference the C1 zoning district in terms of the permitted uses. So again, we could find consistency with rezoning the property to C1. So to summarize, to address the issues of density and setbacks, by having the applicant file a general plan amendment and change of zone application, we could resolve the majority of those issues. So Madam Chair, that concludes staff's presentation to you. The applicant is available via Zoom. They do have a presentation for you. So we could either take questions of staff now, or if you would like, we could have the applicant do their presentation.
Why don't we take questions of staff first and then have the applicant do their presentation? I know Commissioner Hirschbein has a question.
Thank you. Do we know what Riverside County Flood Control District's plans are for that adjacent parcel?
Yes, we do. Mr. Menharris, if you could address that question, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Menharris just stepped out. The Riverside County Flood Control owns the property immediately to the north of this. It's a strip of land that's about 20 feet in width. It runs immediately west as well. So it runs through the single-family neighborhood to the west. There is a major flood control conveyance underground in that land. And so there isn't the possibility of building above it. And it's not anything that the Riverside County Flood Control District is going to relinquish in the near future. So again, it is reserved for flood control purposes.
Could it ever be landscaped and used as a pedestrian right-of-way? Not right-of-way, but pedestrian use? Does it have to remain sort of scrubby and untended like that forever?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Rick with Engineering. That is something that we would have to go back to Riverside County Flood Control and get their, get some input back from them on that. They're pretty specific about leaving their facilities and their structures untouched. So it's a discussion that we would have to have with them another day.
Okay. I've got at least one other question. What's the overall lot coverage combining the two parcels? What's the overall lot coverage? Hello?
Ms. Kikuchi will have that answer for you in just a moment. She's just going through her staff report. If you'll give her just a minute.
Okay.
It looks like 2.4 acres.
Based on the information that's provided by the applicant, the proposed total open space is about 55%. Therefore, the remaining portion will be considered to be built out. So that will make it 45%.
Okay. And the 55% open space, do that include the drive aisles?
I have to check. The staff is aware that the parking does not count in the calculation of the open space. I have to get back to you on that one.
Because, you know, when we were looking at the, excuse me, when we were looking at defining open space for some of these other zone changes, we explicitly excluded drive aisles, driveways and the like. So to call it 55% and include that drive aisle, I think is kind of misleading. Lot coverage. I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Fag, could you, if the, when the zoning and general plan gets changed to NCC, could you review if we're going to have issues with the north setback requirement?
The only area that we would have an issue with, and I believe the applicant has a slide that will depict this, is relative to the Riverside County Flood Control, the western portion of the Riverside County Flood Control property, which is zoned R2. It requires a greater setback. So it's just the western half along the northern boundary where there would be an issue. Because of the unique nature of the flood control property, a variance may be appropriate for that portion of the site. However, I believe the eastern portion of the northern boundary of the property would be in conformance with the C1 development standards.
Okay. So just to confirm that, just to confirm that, as far as the spacing between buildings, per se, of what's existing and what's new, the separation would actually be roughly about greater than 25 feet, because we have the channel. But the property distance to the building, the legal property line to the building, right now is being controlled at 25 feet.
Yes, that's correct. Again, because nothing can be built above ground on the Riverside County Flood Control property, there is going to be a greater setback than if it were owned by someone else and it was developed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's my question.
Other questions? Then I have one. Does the fire department require the driveline and an exit out onto Palm Canyon?
Yes, it does.
And they're requiring that in spite of the city's not disinclination to have any cuts into Palm Canyon itself, into a major thoroughfare?
According to the fire department, developments such as this one needs to have at least two entry and exit points. The purpose is that, is if one of the entry points is blocked in emergency by a fire truck or any other reason, they still have to be able to provide the accessway for emergency responders to be able to get to the site.
So can you just walk us through the emergency, the two points and the entrances and exits that are required? If you could do it by laser on the slide?
If the control room could bring up the site plan again?
So this is the proposed entryway. And this is where the proposed fire emergency access gate will be located.
And how does somebody, there's an emergency gate there, how does somebody who lives there enter and leave?
That is, the staff, well, the staff has not received the specific details of the operability of the gate. And that is something that the staff needs to look at as a part of this review process.
But there's a possibility that people won't be exiting out of that gate or entering through that gate, but turning around and it will have some kind of a stroke system?
Correct.
Madam Chair, this is Brian Adamson, the developer. Our intention is to not have any residents enter or exit off of North Palm Canyon. That will be an emergency vehicle entrance and exit only.
So it would have just an opti cam system for the fire department?
That is correct.
Okay. And Noriko, could you just show me where the Riverside County Flood Control land is?
Sure. So the Riverside County Flood Control Parcel is directly north. It's a strip of parcels, as you can see.
So just, if you could just point it out, because it's, that's a little confusing to me. It's not.
So this is, this is the, the flo, excuse me. This linear strip right there is the Riverside County Flood Control Parcel.
And there's no street there. So the only, there's no street to the north that's, that's a parcel?
Correct. No street.
Okay. Thank you. I was reading it as a street. Those are my questions. Anybody else? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah. One more. Thank you for staff. In terms of a minimum density in the general plan, can you talk a little bit about why the general plan is looking for a minimum density in certain areas?
Certainly. We have minimum density requirements in the Central Business District, and then also in our residential districts. The intent with a minimum density threshold in the Central Business District is to encourage higher-density housing rather than low-density housing. And so for that reason, because it is a pedestrian area, it allows greater height and density for the most part. It is encouraged to have a minimum threshold for residential projects.
But what, yeah, I know, I get that part of it. But what's the rationale? Why does the city want minimum densities in certain areas of the city?
In the Central Business District, again, it's to meet housing goals and to encourage the type of housing that is appropriate for that area. In residential districts, it's been my experience that it's a little unusual to have a minimum threshold. So for example, even in our single-family areas, we have a minimum density threshold. In other states where I've worked, we haven't had such thresholds. So again, it's a little unusual to require it in residential areas. In commercial areas, it's specific to requiring a certain type of housing.
And so is it fair to say that the density would enhance the area around it in terms of viability for commercial uses?
Correct. Viability of commercial uses and also appropriateness of building type and massing.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to go to the applicant's presentation.
And for the applicant's team, which of you will be sharing your screen?
I will. Danny.
Danny? Okay. Just one minute, please.
Hey, Kathy, your volume is very low. I'm having trouble hearing you. And also, you're, can't, there you are. You're turning that up too. That helps. But the volume has been really low.
I can't turn it up, so.
This is Mark Rios. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
First, I just want to thank all of you for taking the time in your study session to look at our project. And as always, I'm anxious to hear any of your thoughts and comments. And we all want to make the project the best project we can for Palm Springs. Just to address the overall density and location of the project, we've spent a lot of time really studying the context and all the surrounding neighborhoods. In an area of the downtown Central District that has commercial on all sides of it, the housing minimum densities really make a lot of sense. This site is a little bit more unique. Because of the residential community to the west of it, Olas Palmas, we're really trying to formulate an overall design that works appropriately with every single edge. And we felt that it would be really a bad relationship to have a really dense project here up against that residential edge. It is a unique combination of surrounding densities. So the overall massing and idea of the project was to continue the pedestrian quality of Palm Canyon by having residential, commercial along that edge and having a two-story building to really reinforce the overall urban character of the street. Then along Chino, we're having an edge that has a lot of setbacks and the ins and outs to create a varied experience along that sort of edge. And then we're looking at having the main entry off of Betino, adjacent basically to the Olas Palmas community. We're really looking for a site overall solution that doesn't have a harmful impact on traffic on the community. And it's also another reason And it's also another reason why we're really looking at this density. We plan to really reinforce a pedestrian community here. And so although there's only one auto entry on that western edge, we have several pedestrian entries so that the residents can integrate in the walking community along Palm Canyon. This image just shows the various setbacks. The existing zoning is shown in red. And you can see because of the split between the CBD and the R2, the setbacks change from the front half of the site to the back half of the site. And under this new modification, the setbacks would be in the blue dotted line. And it would be a uniform setback for the entire four parcels. Our design has always taken into account the idea of doing one story and an additional setback along the residential edge to the west. Next image. We're really conscious of trying to make a project that really contributes in a positive way to the street life. And so this diagram really addresses what's that edge like along Palm Canyon? So all the blue along that represents a transparent and glass elevation so that people walking along the sidewalk see activity and sort of life in the project. And we're really looking at that corner as being a space that acts as a beacon at that intersection. Although these are not really dense program components, a gym and a yoga studio, just the movement and the life, I think, will really contribute to the experience along Palm Canyon. And then along Chino, we're looking at never having sort of a wall longer than 40 feet. And so we're trying to vary that edge. The overall design of the project really builds in the idea of breeze block, which is really kind of a wonderful mid-century material in Palm Springs, masonry that lets light come through it. We're using both breeze block and a metal screen. And those are really seen as ways of breaking down the scale of the street experience, giving sort of animation and light at nighttime and creating privacy for the various units. Next image. This is a perspective basically along Chino. And here you can see how we're really addressing that urban edge of stepping the wall in and out and trying to create a irregular and a non-consistent street experience. And the next image. Is the corner of Palm Canyon and Chino. And here you can see sort of the transparencies of looking into the commercial area. And the second floor of the building creates somewhat of an overhang just to give a shadow line and to sort of designate the scale of the street life. So that's really our sort of brief presentation. And we really wanted to focus just on how the building meets the edges of the property and how those edges deal with all these current zoning requirements and hopefully some proposed modifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
I'll start.
I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing hands. Commissioner Hirschhorn?
I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Rios, for spending a lot of time looking at this site. Clearly, it's a very important site for the city. Might be one of the most important sites urbanistically left, you know, empty lots left in the city, might be one of the most important. I do have a few questions for you. And let's start with the northeast corner. I noticed that, well, first of all, I noted that you have way more parking than you're required to. And with that in mind, I was wondering if you've thought about eliminating the three or four parking spaces that flank the north and south sides of the emergency gate, setting the edge of the wall back or the building back? And giving that over to some more public use, small plaza, little seating area, that kind of thing? Have you thought about that?
That's a really good suggestion. We've explored a whole series of sort of pocket parks. Some of our earlier schemes actually had a little plaza at Palm Canyon and Chino. And through just sort of evolution discussion, we've ended up with a building form there. The guest, the guest parking numbers are really provided so we didn't impact the Olas Palmas community with guest parking. That's why we provided more parking than required. There is a crosswalk coming across at that intersection. And so we have really an ample setback there to do landscaping. I think we could consider having a little bit more dimension if you think that would be an important addition to the streetscape.
Well, I do, but just on the parking, you have almost twice as much parking as you are required to. And giving up three or four spaces flanking the gate to provide a little bit of relief to the streetscape, I think you should consider.
Right, we will do that.
I've got a couple of other questions. Did you take note of the urban form of the Chicken Ranch Restaurant opposite Chino from your project?
I know that building. It wasn't, to be honest, sort of the source of inspiration, but it does have a certain kind of corner iconic quality. And so I think we were trying to make our corner have its own sort of iconic form to match it or to pair with it.
Yes, that's what I noted too. It did have a gesture on the corner, a very urbanistic gesture. I mean, smaller in scale clearly, but it did have a nice urbanistic gesture on the corner. In terms of the setbacks of, of that building from Chino and from Palm Canyon, it provides a nice relief. And it also, if you look at Chino, you've probably noted that it's a very kind of axial road that leads right to the mountains. It's got that alleys of palm trees going down the center and the monument signs. There's something very axial and symmetrical about that. And I was wondering if you thought perhaps doing something that is more of a gesture to that symmetry that would enhance that access on that corner than you've currently done?
I love Chino. I love the trees. And you're right, it is a great view, alley to the mountains. We looked originally at making a more symmetrical kind of linear edge along Chino to make that a formalized alley. And I think it seemed sort of heavy-handed. So that's why we ended up with those series of walls. There is a symmetry about those walls. They're all the same length, they have sort of the same sort of spacing. The lanterns sort of are symmetrical. So I think that that edge will have a big scale sort of reading that works with the palms. I guess the short answer is we've thought about that a lot because I think that's just an important view axis for the city.
Well, I actually wasn't referring to the Chino edge to the west of your Palm Canyon building. I was talking more about maybe the first 30 or 40 feet of the site as it relates to the Chicken Ranch building, that it marks sort of a gateway to Chino. If it did match it in scale and form, I think you might have something really important going on. It would, it would really be a nice marker for that street. It would enhance it. I'm not talking about the whole length.
Yeah, I get it. I understand.
You're good.
So let's, we'll look at across the street. And if we could make sort of this gateway moment, you sort of pass through to inner Chino, I think it's a nice idea. So we'll look across the street and see what relationships we can make.
And also the size of the plaza in front of the Chicken Ranch building is a nice element as well, I think. You know, you've sort of addressed some of my issues about your treatment of the Palm Canyon edge, but right now, if I look at the plan view, it appears to me that you're really excluding the public from like 99% of that edge. You only have, and I'm just going by the plan view that was part of our package, it may have changed, but you only have one door into a space on that whole edge. And have you thought about increasing the access to what you're calling commercial spaces along there?
Just from an operational point of view, we've sort of thought about that one door just being the entry into sort of the reception or secure area. And then the circulation to the various yoga room and gym is really seen as being sort of the exterior circulation, that you go into that plaza space and you go into the various areas. There are some inner doors you can move through, but we were trying to use glass so that they feel open, people can see activity. But we were trying to really limit a maxes to one location for security and reception.
And just help me out, if they're not labeled on my plan. If you start on the north end of that building, can you just put names to those spaces? Because you don't have that.
Sure. So basically, at the northern end is a spa area. And it has some treatment rooms. And it's, so that's going to be a fairly closed block. We have bathrooms, we've put up against that. We're trying to make the yoga and the lobby and the gym the really the transparent pieces. And so those walls, right now, our plan actually isn't accurate. We're showing them in the elevations. We don't want those to be glazed walls. We feel that it's important to see activity and to activate the street.
So I'm starting with those two parking spaces adjacent to the gate. So between there, between there and the first stairwell, what are those two spaces?
So those are part of the small spa. They're probably not going to have really any windows or opening to Palm Canyon to the street.
And then on the other side of the stairwell, what is that room?
That's a men's restroom and changing room.
Okay. And then the big room is the yoga studio?
Correct.
And then adjacent to the yoga room, there's another, is that the women's changing room now?
Correct, exactly.
Okay. And then to the south of the stairwell, what's that room?
That's just an equipment room, basically, mechanical room. And then we're putting the gym on the corner so we can get as sort of much visibility and glass there. And I just want to see, you know, people on that corner as you're moving by it.
Okay. Are these meant to be condominiums?
I think we're really looking at them as being rental units, but the way they're designed and made, they could be condominiums, but we're thinking of them as rental units.
Okay. The other thing I was thinking about, because I was out there today and just thinking about that edge, because like I said, urbanistically, it's probably the most important empty site left in the city. And one thing we like to do in Palm Springs, as you know, is have parades. And we're not going to always be in lockdown and hopefully our parades are going to start again. And if you think about the art, art building across the street, there's some low walls and some little berm areas. And if you've ever attended one of the more popular parades, you know that those get used for that viewing purpose. And I know you have a couple of benches, but if, I'm looking at the plan now, maybe it's evolved, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of gestures towards providing any kind of viewing areas for the parades along there. And I'm suggesting, you know, more seating or a little raised area, something that would step back maybe the facade of the building a couple feet to allow people to stand there to watch something or to sit there to watch something. I think if you think about the city or any city as being a series of processions, you might generate some form that would allow for that.
No, I'm really excited. This is the first time I'm going to do a parade diagram. And I think it's a great comment. Along Chino, we were thinking of sort of this low wall. I think we should try to figure out, how do we make maybe a long seat wall that could provide places for people to watch the parade? We have actually a larger setback there for to make a nice pedestrian circulation space, but let us think about that and we'll supply in our submittal some diagrams and information about that idea.
Thank you. And then, this is my last thing, I think, I have another brain storm. When I first looked at this, I was, I know you spent a lot of your career enhancing urban environments for the good. And I was sort of disappointed in the treatment of Palm Canyon. And I'd really like you to go back and think about this edge in a very urbanistic way that contributes to the activity that it could generate and is already there. And, you know, we're not always going to be in lockdown and eventually it's going to be a fabulous place again. And I would like to see the building respond in a more aggressive way that enhances that edge. And I got to say, the rest of the building, however you figure out, various CBD, general plan, I'm with you on all that stuff. But I, for me, that Palm Canyon edge, I think you got to go back and take a more significant look at what you've done.
Other question? Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. So can we put the site plan back? So, excuse me. So Mr. Rios, along with the comments of my colleague, when it was suggested to look at the number of guest parking or the number right now that says 15, 16, 19, and 20, I believe you show the vehicular gate adjacent to space number 20. Is that correct?
Is correct, yes.
Okay. So if you would consider because of the issues that my colleagues have discussed, if those spaces, for example, were eliminated and more space towards the street life was considered, there would be some space also available for that whole wing to push back and allow the corner to have more space to address the street urban design. So if you, if you look at that whole wing that says two units over retail, we're really trying to keep with the downtown design of what that edge and how it becomes part of the texture with the buildings across the street and on both Palm Canyon as well as Chino Drive. So if you could consider that. The second question I have for you is on West... Um, the second question I have for you is, on, uh, west with, West Chino Drive, uh, you proposed for the wall height, uh, to be at eight feet or so, um, and across the corridor project, although it's a commercial project, it has this, uh, sort of step-down composition of where the, uh, gate to a courtyard is, and it really, uh, transitions the scale nicely. And also, if you drive into the historical neighborhood, sometimes I believe the gate design, uh, creates an interest to the rest of the composition of the building. So having said all that, um, have you considered on West Chino Drive to actually have a, a gate to each of the units, uh, so that there is a pedestrian energy component, uh, and although people may use it randomly, it still for the downtown use, it says, hey, there is something going on, there's a wonderful courtyard back there, um, there's families back there, i- it, 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 uh, builds the composition or the conversation of a building. So have you considered that, um, and not, uh, the wall being high, uh, creates sort of this mass separation between the public and the private units? And I, I believe from, um, the inside, perhaps look at the, uh, at the experience of when you have something, oh, a, a side wall that is eight feet high as well. Um, so I, I know it was more of a statement than a, than a question, but, um, would you, did you consider, um, having it more a pedestrian access, um, composition on that, uh, north facade?
It's a good question. At one point in time, we actually had in, um, pedestrian entries for each unit along those gardens and courtyards.
Oh, yeah.
Come in and go. And in sort of talking to some se- security consultants and others, people, there is some real concern about having that many sort of unprotected openings along that edge, so we had deleted it. Um, instead, by making sort of the varied sort of wall and screen, and wall and screen, we were trying to sort of give it some of that life that I think those gates and doors, um, originally provided. We'll think about it again, but I know that, um, security and multiple entry points is a point of concern here, and the gatehouse that we're proposing really is trying to be the principal sort of entry unless you want to use a key card and you can come in at the corner.
Right. So it's more than function, it's more a, a reason to, uh, transition the building mass to the wall, to the sidewalk.
What I, what I'd like to do for next time we submit is actually include the design of the other side of the street. And I think trying to address the, um, prior questions about the, the corner and the adjacent building, we should really be showing that entire edge. So, um, we all can look at Chino and see how both edges of the fabric on either side contribute to a good experience.
Um, did, did you, now, if we go to the nor- northeast corner, uh, of the two-story building, uh, the one that's, uh, flanking, uh, Casey's Restaurant, what is the, what is the design of that corner, uh, building? Is carport below and then a residential unit above?
May I interrupt for a second? Uh, Director Fag, we're at five thirty-three. It's pretty clear to me that we will probably have some more time on this, in that we've only gotten, we haven't even gotten through two commissioners' questions. Uh, wha- how do we handle this?
We can go ahead and take some additional questions. It's okay for us to go a little bit over our timeframe here. Um, however, I would be very cautious about five forty-five is when we need to conclude the study session. It will take us about ten minutes to set up for the regular session, uh, so I don't really want to go past five forty-five, if maybe we could abbreviate our questions a little bit.
I'm going to have to ask Commissioner Song to abbreviate her questions. Uh, we haven't, we have three other commissioners who haven't gotten to ask any questions, and we may go a little bit beyond five forty-five.
Sure. Uh, I, I think it's more of a comment or something that, uh, Mr. Rios could, uh...
Right. I understand your comment.
Okay. And, um, and then if we are going with the variances, uh, the overhang of the second floor on that northeast corner could also be considered, uh, to, to create our circulation on that facade. Um, those are the questions I had.
Uh, Commissioner Wu, do you have questions?
Sorry about that. Sure, I'll try and make them brief. Uh, Mr. Rios, I don't think I've ever met you, but thank you for this. Um, as Commissioner Hirschman said, I think Chino Drive is a very important street, and the parcel is a very important one. So, I'd love to see other ideas that you have for the corner, actually the corner of Chino and Palm Canyon. That, to me, seems like a very important spot to make space for that historic pedestal that's there, create a view corridor. Um, and just speaking for myself, I'm have a little bit of a trouble of the, with the lack of symmetry between what's on the other side of Chino and what, what you're proposing. The street feels imbalanced to me, so I don't know if there's a way to address the massing of the second floor along Chino, and perhaps use it in the interior of the project. The, um, the other questions that I had were really about, is this the only way to orient your project where it looks inward so much versus embracing the surrounding area? And, um, since we're just in a study session, I don't think there's much that either of us can say to each other about this. Um, but those are the kind of basic instincts that I had in looking at this. And thank you.
Commissioner Marotse?
Here we go. Uh, just a quick question. Where it says for the CBD zone, uh, this, I think it's the side setback, two hundred and nineteen feet provided, zero, zero required, uh, w- I don't understand the two hundred and nineteen feet. Where, where is that, two hundred and nineteen feet on the plan?
Not sure which two hundred and nineteen feet we're referring to.
On page, is it page three? Yeah, three, three of the staff report, uh, where it has minimum setbacks. It's the last one where it says rear, I believe, and it's two hundred and nineteen feet, so I'm, I'm confused about that. Maybe staff could respond to that if it's not obvious?
Yes, this is, uh, because of the split zone, this analysis is a little bit complicated. So, um, right now, the project site consists of four separate parcels, but if this project were to be implemented, uh, per engineering requirement, all these parcels are going to be marched. And, uh, yes, the site is about four hundred fifty feet in length, but the CBD portion only fifty feet in length, but the CBD portion only is only, uh, extends to the mid part of the, uh, the parcel. So that is the reason why the rear setback, which is usually measured from the rear property line, in this case, was measured from the west end of the project site.
Oh, okay. So that, uh, two hundred and nineteen feet isn't particularly helpful in this, in this case. So I'll, I'll ignore that part. Um, you know what? I, I think, I don't have any other questions at this point. It's, I, my colleagues have brought up very important points that I would have brought up, but I don't think I need to add to that, so thank you.
Uh, I have some comments. On, if you bring up the site plan again, the, and just show the street, across the street where you see the parking, people walk into the corridor project through there. And one of the concerns I have is you have no really good way to do that except to key card, look at the east end of the site. Uh, I don't think it mirrors it. I do like the idea of doors on the street, um, to activate the street, to keep it, to keep it pedestrian. So I would really like to see that if it, if and when it comes back to us. Um, and the security concerns are less for me than the importance of activating the street. Uh, it looks to me, when you said there were all sorts of pedestrian accesses, I only see the gatehouse, and I could be wrong, uh, an entrance, um, pretty close to Palm Canyon, but I don't see other entry and exit points from the site, uh, to be able to get people out onto the street.
Um, you're correct. There is one at the southeast corner, um, obviously the main entry, there's probably a pedestrian exit gate by the, um, emergency exit gate on that corner, um, but those are the only current exit points.
And, and that's a concern to me, because the quarter is, uh, such an important place in the city, and it's so well-used, and anybody who lives here is going to jaywalk across Chino Drive and go there. Uh, so it's, uh, I think some more acknowledgement that on what's a very beautiful project. Um, the other concern is the Palm Canyon. Uh, you have sort of a strip, a shade strip. Shade and walking down Palm Canyon for us is really important. We're trying to create a walkable city, and the trees you have are palms, which don't provide shade. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, there needs to be some kind of an overhang, uh, that actually provides shade for people if you're not going to be providing, uh, shade trees that shade the street. Um, and, uh, real shade trees would be, uh, exciting to see in the city instead of palms, in spite of the name of Palm Springs. Uh, and then, I don't understand the commercial uses that you have. Are they something that whoever, I, I don't know who's going to own this, if it's you or somebody that you're working with, but are they running the yoga studio and the gym? Is that open to the public? Um, sort of, what is that currently? Is there an operator for it? Is this a whimsical idea of what might be there?
The intent is that it would be facilities that would be open to the public, but also be used by the residents here. I think it's undetermined yet, we don't have an operator, and, um, but the idea is that it works both ways. It works into the community, and it works for the residents here.
So if you don't, have you determined what the, like, the height requirements are for that retail space, in case you don't have an operator and it becomes retail?
Um, we've, specifically, we haven't done a retail study for it. Um, some of our early meetings, um, with the city talked about trying to find a use for it other than retail, just because there's a lot of retail along Palm Canyon. We were trying to find a way that we could have something to really activate the street, and so that the residents here and the, the community would sort of provide that. I think you're right. It needs to be able to work both ways. We can't predict the future. So let us look at it and see if, um, how it would work as retail space in the event someday it wasn't, um, a gym or a yoga area.
It's, I mean, it, it's an interesting site, because across the street, that area is really only activated by the school and the art, the art facility, um, so that it's not across the street dependent on something activating it across the street for it to function. Uh, but it is a transition to the rest of the design district, and really a welcome transition, going to be able to go from the corridor and walk down to the design district and have something that you see. Um, and so the activation, uh, I'm glad to see the glass. I do think the area needs to be activated, but I think you need to look at it both ways.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is, uh, Brian Adamson, the developer again. Um, the, the current ceiling heights that we have, uh, do exceed the typical for retail. Um, typical retail for this area would be nine to ten feet of clear height, which, which we certainly have. And, um, our intention is certainly to have, uh, independent local operators provide classes in this area for, uh, the yoga and the gym studios. Um, however, if this needs to transition into more traditional retail, we do feel confident that the design we have with both interior and exterior entrances to the spaces will more than adequately provide for that type of use as well. Uh, however, we do anticipate these being relatively low transitional uses from high-density retail to low-density, uh, retail as well.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, I, you know, I do think the yoga and the gym would work. We obviously have a lot of people in town who can provide some of those services, uh, and classes. Um...
That's exactly right. And, and, and we, we, again, do not have an operator for it yet, um, but we intend to build it out for an area that it, it could potentially not be a single operator. It could be multiple, um, providers from the area who would be able to lease this space for classes, um, again, sized in a way that it could provide for the occupants of this, um, development, but also for the community as a whole.
Uh, I, I think that's everything, you know, I agree with the comments of my other commissioners as well. Um, and those, the pedestrian access, the, the Chino Street, are, would be my real, my strongest concerns. I think with that, we can conclude. Oh, Commissioner Hirschman?
I'd just like to...
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I just had one more, uh, question. I'll try to make it really brief. Uh, Mr. Rios, are you familiar with a, a mixed-use project further north on the same side of the street that has sort of two-story, uh, units above a commercial space? It's probably built about early two thousands?
Yes.
So what, what I like about that one is that the balconies participate with the street life of Palm Canyon. And I was wondering, rather than having those, um, kind of impenetrable breeze block walls up to full height of the building where you have those balconies, did you give any thought to allowing people to be seen and to see out?
We were really focusing the views of the mountain and trying to screen noise, um, coming into the unit, so we, to be completely frank, sort of, we're trying to make a way to have a more of a protected edge, but, um, let's look at it again. Maybe there are some opportunities to have some punctures in that to have a little bit more engagement. I understand the question.
Thanks.
I'd just like to, this is Peter Mahler, and I'd like to say thank you to all of you. I've been coming to Palm Springs for forty years and picked out the house that I live in in old Las Palmas. Pete's been there, I think, when I was fourteen. And, uh, I visited with La Sierra University for seventeen years, twice a year in person, to secure this lot. And it was absolutely critical to me that this be a lot that was thoughtfully developed, because I think it is the single most important lot available in Palm Springs, and that our economics were secondary to the outcome of what has developed on this lot. Mark Rios and his team developed our buildings across... Mark Rios and his team developed our buildings across from 803 North Palm Canyon, where Christopher Anthony's shop is below those condominiums. The Rios team redid the El Paseo Plaza and the Roman Boarders, and those were the three buildings 20 years ago that really, after Trina Turk, led to the resurgence of the Uptown Arts District. And our goal here is to create a luxury residential community. And we've had a tremendous amount of time spent studying this and talking to people. And people have a strong desire to be in the community and security and privacy and all of those things really matter to people. And I just wanted to share that perspective with all of you and thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this point, I will close the study session of the Palm Springs Planning Commission and call to order the regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, we will need about 10 minutes to switch over to start the regular meeting. Also, as a housekeeping item, you all will need to sign out of the Zoom link that you're currently using. There is a separate Zoom link, which David has sent to you for the 5:30 regular session of Planning Commission. So if you'll give us about 10 minutes, we'll go ahead and work on that transition. Thank you.
Will we do that at six o'clock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.